Okay, everyone, it is 11 o'clock, so we're going to get started. Thanks for attending, thanks for your interest. I think we'll all be interested in this subject. You know, a few months ago, we talked anything. We're down here. It's just speakers.
Thank you. Now, it's
Test, test. You're not on the election.
Your screen is no longer being shared, Beau.
Yeah, I'll just mention as he's trying to get that working, a few months ago, we organized a committee thinking that might be a good way to bring some kind of consensus on how to proceed on some issues. My guess is, based on what I've heard, that there hasn't been a lot of consensus, so we're going to see what's presented tonight and look forward to to the work of this committee. We do appreciate the time and effort that they put together trying to address these significant issues. And everyone in this room and elsewhere in our community is, of course, interested in the outcome, so we appreciate everyone's participation. Let's start with a roll call, I guess, first with the members of the City Council, with Andrew here.
And Randy Straight.
Marty McCain.
Nancy Pelosi.
Chris Anderson.
Courtney Soon.
Paul Bing.
And then let's get a roll call from the members of Planning and Zoning who are present.
Kennedy Kersensen.
Gary Farmil.
Joe Vanyan.
Mike Mialter.
Craig Bolson.
Okay, thanks. And since this is a report of the Growth Committee, we have members of the committee who are present, so indicate.
Ken Kroeg.
Cory Segmiller.
Eve Martin.
Jerry Hops.
Gary Sedgeon.
Sony Brown.
Rick Dykes.
Ruel Hernandez.
Great. Thanks to all of you. Anyone like to offer an expression of choice as we get started this evening? Maybe there's a What about pledge of allegiance? Oh, right there, okay, we got someone, she can decide. Oh, we did put the pledge really, just did we? We'll do that option.
Military.
Usually happen, I don't count the weekends.
Our kindly gracious Father in heaven, we come together as members of this city and in an effort to come to some understanding of issues and difficulties that we have found and that have arisen. And we pray, Father, for the ability to see truth and light and be discerning. We pray for this committee who have tried to bring facts to our attention, for the ability to make good choices. We pray for our City Council. They are striving to do what is needful for this city. We pray for our planning and zoning, that they too will be guided. And we pray for ourselves as a citizenry, that unity can prevail, that we might do that which is good and right and best for the growth of this town. For growth is inevitable, and we desire to keep a good and beautiful place as it already is. We are grateful to live in this land. We are grateful to live in this town. Help us to do all that is needful, to keep it that way, and to be responsible with that which we've been blessed with. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Appreciate that. Well, we go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance to the most in terms of the first one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you, amen. So, just as a reminder, this is a work meeting, it's not a regular business meeting of the City Council, so we won't conduct any business or won't take any actions while, while our business will be hearing the report from the Growth Committee. And as, as Kenny Kroeg is the Chair of that committee, and I think Cory Segmiller has been designated as this kind of the co-chair, that they're either ones making the presentation. We don't have a public comment section on, on work meetings. If a council member or a planning zone member has a specific question for someone, and you invite someone to to say something, they'd be welcome to respond to that. But other than that, it's, it's, it's the committee's report, and it's up to them as to how the committees want to present, make that presentation. So, Ken, we'll turn it over to you.
Hey, thank you. Well, it's been four adventurous months. We've been working almost every Tuesday. We took a week off for the fourth and the 24th, but other than that, we've been upstairs pounding through this. I want to just sort of jump right in. The, I remember when, when, first week of June, when the motion was made to pull this committee together, and Paul asked that it be six months. Excuse me, Paul said three months. No, you said six months, he said three months. And Marty said, there's no way you'll get it done in three months. Better give him another month to get things organized. He was right. It took us about a month to come together, just to get the committee starting to roll. And I want to walk you through what the committee has been about. The members of the committee are right here. The, the meetings, again, are mentioned right there. Tonight is September 18th. We've got one more meeting where we'll make this presentation. Again, I understand, this one is just to the council, the City Council and the mayor. But all of you are invited to watch and enjoy. But I, I think we're, we're supposed to do the official presentation, I understood, on, on that next City Council meeting. So I want to just jump right in. You know, the, the committee members are right here. One of the first questions we got was, is this a fairly balanced group? And I will say, geographically, we, we cover a big chunk of the city, ten members there. And Randy Straight was our City Council liaison, he's on this as well. Right out, right out of the gate, there was a little bit of going back and forth as to what our full purpose was. The very first thing that we did was actually, well, actually, the very first thing, Craig, you probably remember, I came over the next Saturday morning and met with you for about an hour and a half. He gave me a big stack of papers and maps and walked me through things. Mentioned the, the general plan for the city, which we went and looked at, it was thirty-eight pages. Now, I had a pre-existing relationship with a man named Mike Hanson of Rural Community Consultants. I understand they're a main competitor to Sunrise Engineering. I didn't know they were in the same realm a little bit. But we asked him to go ahead and look at our plan that I was given, and he went through that and gave about twenty recommendations. We at first were thinking, okay, maybe this is a massive scope here. And I've always learned that when you have a massive scope, when you're trying to boil the ocean, you better relook if you're going to actually get it accomplished. So we went back into the charter itself that the mayor gave us, and I wanted to refer us to that specifically. This second main paragraph here, I will walk us through that. In fact, I'm going to summarize, we, we boiled it down to these five main issues. If you note, the very first thing, the Spring City Plan Growth Committee is to consider and prepare a plan for growth in and around Spring City. Including the identification, so there's, of the areas that may be suitable for consideration of subdivision into building lots smaller than 1.06 acres. Stand a lot. And for the development of homes for residents of various income levels, that was second. And provide an input regarding potential revisions to the recently adopted Spring City ordinance regarding the creation of a new residential multifamily zone. So, to simplify, it was these five main things. Smaller lot sizes, affordable housing, multifamily housing, and then growth in the city and growth around the city. So, we realized if we had a prayer of trying to address that by the end of September, that would be our scope. That took us a little while to get nailed down. I'm going to be going over these key principles that we took at the beginning. Number one was to focus on the facts. We had already realized this was a very emotional series of topics. So we were going to try and do that. We found within our own committee, it was still emotional, and rightly so. The goal was to, was to represent different opinions as well as geographies in the city. Right out of the gate, it was clear, we wanted to preserve and enhance the historic district. That was like table stakes. But the main argument that kept coming up was, was property rights. So we wanted to look at the balance between what was happening and what the debates were. And not just property rights of the owner, but property rights of neighbors. And we had that aptly represented, I will tell you. So, and both have to be considered. The, the method that I recommended, I would bring to the table was what's called financial modeling. And if, Paul, if you'll remember, when you asked me to do it, I said, I'll do it if I can get the data. And so that's what we've tried to do, is build models where you can actually change the data and see what comes out. That's what's been built, and those will be available going forward. As this went along, we realized it was, it was a, a very important topic around citizen equity versus developer profits. I will be talking about that a lot. As we interviewed citizens, the, the recommendation for transparency and trust were very important. We learned that that has to be a two-way street. And we, we, we did get the committee to agree on one main thing. There was a consensus around the pros and cons of these recommendations, so we will be sharing those. And as was mentioned, and it's funny, because I've been getting calls from other communities saying, we're hearing about you guys in Spring City. And I'm like, whoa. And several City Councils from other cities have checked in and said, we're going through the same thing, growth. And as was mentioned, it's inevitable, but the whole point of the, even the title of this committee was planned growth. So we'll see how that can shape up. So, our timeline was this, we started the first week of June, we said we would end the last of September. I understand that, again, the final thing will be the presentation, if that's still needed, on October 3rd. So, our, our general methods that we used was to be objective and address the immediate challenges of growth that face Spring City. We would use both maps and the interactive maps, as well as models where we could change the variables, and I'll be showing you how that works. And they've been defined to allow the, the illustration of the data that we've received. It's come from multiple channels and sources. I will be making that available, as well as the tools, so that we can use in the future if we choose to. And the main goal is financial, the, the tangible thing we tried to focus on was, what's the financial benefits that would come to both Spring City as well as the citizens? But there were many, many intangibles that are noted as well, okay? So that's just the method that we used. So, to jump right in, there's all kinds of main lines of revenue listed in the, in the annual budget. These are the big chunks. And we were originally going to go through all of them, but if you'll notice the asterisks on the second one there that says sales tax, we, we tried and tried to get any visibility into the data, and that has currently not been made available. We worked with Dave Oxman at Mount Pleasant, he says the same thing. You just get a one lump sum, here's the money. And so for us to do analysis, we'd have to get in and say, where's all of our sales tax coming from? We were not able to receive that. Electric bills, there was some serious work that happened right up, and even before that, that's not really the scope of, of our, of our discussion today. And then notice the, the variable symbol on road fund, that's a bit of an estimate, because it varies. And what we did is, we took the average for the, of the last three years, and they just paved the road. And, and that shows that it's not quite an exact number. So, just under two million bucks. Well, we then went and we looked, okay, where does Spring City fit in amongst all of this? And as you can see, we're definitely not one of the more populated, we're one of the faster growing. But our, our, our population density is very, very low compared to all the other noteworthy larger cities. And what that means is the number of people per square mile. That was interesting. This is where we started slicing and dicing the data, and it took us a few weeks just to get to this point. What we did is, we went right, we did a grammar request with the county, and we got every single property tax record for every lot in the city. Then we aligned it with the historic properties. We've aligned it with, with also all of the utilities. So we had a, a database that then could show all kinds of interesting things. Right out of the gate, there's six hundred and seventy lots, four hundred and fifty-five homes. Now, that does not account structures like governmental and religious structures. The average person per home living in our city is 2.26, which is a lot less than the county, which is 3.1. We were wondering, why is that? And there's an interesting phenomenon here, because of the historic district, there's a lot of what I call dormant homes or second homes that are sort of showcases. That, that, that might have utilities hooked up, but not a lot going on, and not a lot of people living there. Some own two or three or more homes. In fact, right here, there's a hundred and eleven owners that own more than one lot, and thirty-four that own more than two in our city. So, and, and thirty-one percent of our lot owners have their property mailing addresses outside of our city. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they don't live in the city, but they might have a, you know, a trust that's in Salt Lake or something. But then notice, two hundred and twelve historic buildings, two hundred and forty-three nonhistoric homes. I say buildings versus homes, because there's some that are in the registry as a building on a lot, but there might also be a home as well. So, and then vacant lots, one hundred and ninety-six, and forty of those vacant lots are greenbelt. We'll talk about that also. This is roughly what it looks like with the buffer zone around the city and the city boundaries itself. Now, these are the, the key principles, as I've mentioned, we're going to hit them pretty hard before each new main topic. So, our main goal initially was to preserve and enhance the historic district. I want to turn the time to our co-chair, Cory, who, right out of the gate, this was the second week of our meeting, he decided to go do some research directly to the state registry. I'll turn the time over to you.
Hey, my name's Cory Segmiller. For those of you who don't know me, I am not feeling very well today, so I, I feel like, now, this is important enough for me to kind of drag myself here, so I apologize for my voice, if it's hard to hear, and if I do a little bit of sniffing. So, for those of you who don't know me, I live off of Four South and Six East. I've got one wife, seven kids. We have two cats and two rabbits. And so, we have a very active life with that many people in our house, but we have, we, we built our house and moved in in December of last year, so we're very new to Spring City. We represent, you know, some of the cro, growth that's occurring here, folks just moving in. We absolutely love this city. It is just a fantastic place, and we've been very warmly welcomed here, and so we very much appreciate that. I was very curious as, when I got appointed to this committee, about how the historic district was put together. You know, I, I'm a corporate attorney, I, I like to read things, I like to understand things and how they're put together. And the historic district in particular was fascinating, because it's such a feature of Spring City. And it's, you know, it's, it's, it's just this thing that creates vibrancy for the city. And I wanted to understand how in the world that thing was put together. And so, I, I asked for the assignment to be able to dig into that a little bit and understand it, having no background or no understanding of really what it was, other than there's some nice signs coming into town that talk about it. And so I, I thought this was a good, this would be a good opportunity to kind of dig in, to get a chance to see how that's put together. Okay, you got me there. So, what I did is, I reached out to the State Historic Preservation Office in order to be able to get a sense of what the historic district is, how I could get information about it. And so first off, I asked a, a couple of questions related to, very ignorant questions, I have to ask naive ones, I had no idea what I was digging into, right? So, I asked, for the first question, is the National Historic Register still active for Spring City? Like, if so, can you help me find a place where I can find some documentation related to it? I, I had no idea how this thing was put together. And so, I asked a very dumb question to start, but I, I thought that was, you know, a good place to start, at least from my understanding. Then what year was the historic district effective? What were the requirements that needed to be met in order to place a portion of the city in the National Historic Register? And is there anything in particular that Spring City needs to do or not do to maintain its historic register status? Assuming that it's still active, I, I had no idea. And so you can see, these are pretty naive questions around the historic district and how it was put together. And it took me a while to get to Cory Jensen, because I kind of was banging around at the state level, trying to understand this thing, but finally, I was able to email these questions over to him. And then this was his response, and it's very small, so what I've done is, I've taken his responses and put them on the next slide. Just wanted to show you this interaction there. So, he responded that yes, the Spring City National Historic District is active, and it had been renewed in 2022. And I was like, oh, that's fascinating, I had no idea. So I was like, oh, obviously that was a dumb question for me to ask, then, right? He said it was started in nineteen eighty, and then it was renewed in 2022. So, and ostensibly, the reason for doing that was so that we could add additional buildings that would fit into the historic status, because the historic status is anything that's older than fifty years old, if I understand that correctly. So it was incorporating additional buildings that could be brought in, and just reestablishing the fact that, yes, we have a lot of historic buildings and homes in Spring City, and that district is an important part of this town. Okay, so then, and answer number three, so that kind of covers one and two, right? Let's see, like any other historic district, there are three basic criteria. The properties need to be at least fifty years old, they must retain good historic integrity, and the district must be significant for its architecture or history. And those are the requirements for the historic district. I thought that was in, interesting information. And then question number four, the answer to that one, to maintain the National Register listing status is fairly easy. The district just must maintain the characteristics which was found to be significant. So, I thought that was an interesting answer, because I was like, okay, so how, how does this thing come together? And, and how does it stay together? You know, how do we maintain the, the integrity of the historic district? So I, I decided I was going to follow up with a few more questions. So this was my round one, and these are my round two questions. So, I asked, we still have a fairly large number of empty lots in the city. If those were developed, and that, that development pushed the percentage of historic homes below fifty percent of the total buildings in town, how would that impact the historic district designation? And this was after he sent me some other information that I was looking at documentation related to the historic district. And, and trying to get a better sense of how, you know, how this thing was put together. And I noticed that as part of the, the renewal in 2022, the paperwork related to that indicated what the, what the percentage of new, new construction to old buildings were, historic buildings. And so I thought, okay, that's probably significant, and let me ask some more questions around that. And then I was just, I was like, how, how do we even get to a historic district scenario in the first place? And then what are some of the, you know, constraints or the scope around it for renewal? And, and how does that all work? So I asked the question, how often does the National Historic District, Historic Register status have to be reevaluated? And, I mean, I had no clue, so it's, I thought the answers to these questions were probably the most interesting. And he answered this one just kind of as a long narrative, so he didn't like pick up question one and question two. But essentially, what the answer to this is, is that there's no, there's no period of time that the historic district runs for. There's nothing in statute or law anywhere that would require the historic district to be renewed at any period of time. The original historic district was put in place in nineteen eighty, and it was renewed in 2022, because the, the City Historic Preservation Society decided that it was time to do that, and I guess the resources were rallied in order to be able to accomplish that. And the renewal document is massive. It's just enormous. It took me like ten minutes to download it, and it's just full of all kinds of fascinating history about the town. If, if you have seen that document, it is, it is quite the wonder to behold, and I would encourage anyone, if you can get a hold of a copy of that, just to dig through it a little bit. It is absolutely fascinating. But I think the most important part about this was the fact that there's nothing driving renewal or requiring updates to the historic district. It exists as a robust structure related to the town as long as we want it to exist. So there's nothing that's going to require that to change. And basically, if you look at the way that the rest of his answer works out here, he said, the only thing that we could really do to negatively impact the current historic district status is to start knocking old buildings down, which we're not going to do. So, and I, you know, and, and the question that I was really digging for, I was, I was asking some open questions around, what do we do to harm the historic district? And really what he's, his response was, is, you don't, you, you, there's really not much you can do, again, unless you're knocking buildings down. And, and I was, I was asking open-ended questions, because I really wanted him to give me whatever information was available there, like, does lot size matter? Does population density matter? Does the ratio of, you know, new construction to historic buildings matter? You know, how much do these, how much do these things matter? And the answer that he came back with is, you know, growth is just a natural part of any city. And you're not, you're basically not going to hurt the historic district through growth. And, you know, in another fifty years, forty-eight years, if the city wants to go back and take a look at the historic district again, and reanalyze it and renew it, then that could be done, and it'll be based off of, you know, the, the, the status and the, the construction of the city at that period of time. But there's really nothing that we could do right now that's going to change the historic district designation for Spring City, and it'll, it'll stand. So, but I think the things that that really brings us to that are important, is that because this is a robust structure, because there's not really a lot of requirements related to the maintenance of it, the city is really free to adopt a growth plan that meets the needs of the city without really any concern that we're going to harm the historic district designation in any way. So that's, that's the information that I found, and I was surprised by a lot of this. You know, I'm not super keen on a lot of unregulated growth in town, when it comes right down to it. You know, I, I really, we moved to this town for a reason, it's because it's gorgeous, it has so many amazing historic buildings in it. But at the same time, you know, there's, there's a lot of factors that are playing into growth in our area. And I think, you know, that all these different things need to be taken into account. But I think when it comes down to it, just based on the information that we received back from the State Historic Preservation Office, that damaging the historic district is not something that, that is really, it needs to be a main consideration in regard to growth and planning.
Thank you, Craig. So that was, that caused a lot of interesting discussion amongst our group, because there was a lot of conceptions, misconceptions that we were all just assuming were foundational, and found out that with, from this feedback, they were not. So, what we began then looking at was, and I had been told by Craig that the, the current historic district, that's in the blue, was roughly the same as the city. And it is, it's roughly the same, although there, there are some notable exceptions. You can see the top right, that whole new subdivision east of me is not included. And the lines are, I'm not included on the south end. So, notice what we've done right here. What we went and did is, we looked at what is the current percentage of historic homes versus nonhistoric homes in that existing boundary, okay? And that was the number, you're going to see that, we call this Model Zero, this is like status quo. And then what we started doing is running models, because our goal still was to enhance as much as possible the historic district. So, this was interesting, but we had to do a little bit of a different model to start off. In fact, in meeting with Craig, he gave me a map, and he said, you know, one thing, the, the most richly dense area of the historic district is on both sides of Main Street, till about Fourth North, Fourth South. So that was the first thing we had to learn to do in the models. And we soon learned that you had to go from the middle of the road to the middle of the other road. So notice where it says Main to 100 East? That's the middle of Main Street to the middle of 100 East. So that entire city block is then lumped in with the middle of Main Street to 100 West, the entire city block. So this is not just all of the properties when you drive down Main Street. This is all the properties on those whole blocks that go to the, the center of the, of both streets, north, or east and west. Does that make sense? They're called a lateral, and that's how everything is measured from like the city boundary to the, to the county boundary, for example, is in the center of the road. So that took us a while to understand. Right here, you can see the historic properties, the one minus is everything less than one acre, the one plus is everything above. There's only like one property that's, a couple of properties between one and 1.06, so we just standardized on one. Same with nonhistoric, and then vacant lots right here, this is everything on those blocks on either side of Main Street. Now, this is really where the work got significant. And what we started doing is, we had to run and normalize the data and, and drive all these laterals. And what you can see, it gets really interesting, the, the, the second and third row up is, again, Main Street. There's a couple of rows west of it, and the rest are all east. And you see the historic, the nonhistoric and the vacant lots all the way up. Now, notice there's only six hundred and fifty- And you see the historic, the nonhistoric and the vacant lots all the way up. Now notice there's only six hundred and fifty-one. There's actually six hundred and seventy, but we took out again the governmental and religious properties. Okay, because they weren't tax-based. So these are, these are the exact numbers. This was a. A a an upgrade a little bit from where Randy got us started when he first brought in that data and everyone told us. That was really interesting, so we sort of went there. Okay, now, what we actually did is we modeled. The amount of historic versus nonhistoric properties within these boundaries. And we wanted to see where's the real richness with the highest saturation of historic properties. Does this make sense? So model one is the first one that Craig gave me. That one goes from fourth north to fourth south and that full one block on either side of Main Street. So this is roughly the data that we had just gotten through. Look, and if you'll notice, it's a little small. The saturation is eighty-two point four percent historic. So very, very dense. Model two goes one block further both directions, okay? So it's now second west to second east, and it goes a little bit more north and a little bit more south. As we ran the models, I'll show you. You can start seeing where, let's take a minute to, there we go. The ones I've bolded is where there's huge shifts, like can you see thirty to fourth east? There's twenty historic properties. You drop to fourth to fifties and it drops to eight. And then a couple more, it drops to nothing. Down here at the other extreme, you've got second west, the third west, there's only three total. So these are all just models. This is completely wet cement. We can do whatever we want with it. Okay, so back to this. We've got model three goes up to thirty, stays the same on second. Model four goes all the way up to fourth east. And it starts dropping off um pretty significantly at that point. But we've got a ton of properties right up there in model three. There's a hundred and sixty-five historic properties. And the data just sort of tells us if we were to look, not at changing the historic district boundaries that we've turned into the registry. But one of the things we were asked to consider was what would it look like if we made a historic district zone? That's all this is, okay? Doesn't change the big blue line we saw from the beginning. Okay, so and then here's a summary. These will all be made available. This is just the data of those maps. All right, now, so if this was chosen to be done. It would look something like this now. If you remember, we just had the orange and the red. Now we would have a historic zone wherever it's decided, and this is what it would look like. So then you, if you wanted, you could have certain things going on in historic zone. Craig mentioned what's called a preservation zone. That could be, or it could be an alternate. And then you could have something going on in there with everything else around it. That was the concept. Again, it's totally wet cement. So then we started looking, okay. If the historic district is pretty safe and sound. How do we juggle the other big need, which was property rights? Remembering that there's two kinds, there's owners and neighbors. So we we jumped into the the first main mission that we were given from the charter. Which was to identify um what could be done with with smaller lot size. And this was very interesting. Our first question is, what's been the history of all this change in? In uh restrictions around lots? And we actually found this in the the zoning permit and utility information. And as you can see, there's five different changes that have happened up until August seventh nineteen seventy-nine. It was just open. It started with a third of an acre. That lasted eight years, half an acre, six and a half years, and then one point oh six acre for ten years. Then a very short, I don't know what happened there, but for half a year it shifted, then went back for twenty years. So that's been the the history of the change. Now we started getting into, we added one more variable, and that is all of the number of lots by size. And we put them into what are called quartiles. So everything less than a quarter acre is that minus point two five. Quarter to half, half to one, uh, so not, they're not really quartiles. This is a half and then one plus. Now, there's some pretty big lots in the one plus, but I'll show that later. But we've we've left it by the lateral, so you can see where where everything is geographically. Now we jump into the financial modeling because we were trying to answer those main questions. Again, there's no opinion or commentary in this. This is just data. So the first place we had to start was look at where do we get all of our revenue? So we make about a hundred and two thousand dollars a year right now off property tax. And we get a small fraction of what the county does. They tack it on. Um, notice the green belt, there's forty lots. Those are agricultural um lots. We make a whopping buck a year off of those. And um, and they're not even one percent. Vacant lots, we make about eighty dollars a year. Historic buildings, hun, I can't see with that line there, hundred and seventy something. Nonhistoric, two hundred and seven dollars, okay? That's a building block we'll be using a lot of. So then we we took that and we mapped it out visually. The red is wherever there are um vacant building lots. So you can sort of see, you see that little river, the little Olson Creek, is it? In the top. Oak Creek, okay? And that's a hard obstacle to get over. And so um for both the water and the sewer, which we'll talk about. So there's a lot of vacant lots there. That obstacle has always been a bit of a a boundary. I should have also put green in here, but I didn't have time. Okay, so then we we jumped into all, we had a full year's worth of utility bills of all kinds. Um, they added a whole new element we didn't know about. And that's everybody out of the city. We we service a lot of people out of the city. As well as in the city. So we'll talk about that. We've got exact numbers to show you. But electric, water and sewer, we added the fire district. There's a few others items, but they're not really applicable to everybody where those seem to be. So we've got the the monthly bill, the average for the year, and then a pretty major shift between those in city and those out of city. Now, this is where we start doing some of the financial modeling. Using all of the the normalized data, we were able to go in, add all of it together. And find the average lot size and revenue of a nonhistorical home. Versus a historical home in the city, twenty-eight hundred and fifty bucks versus twenty-six hundred. Now, again, there's little things here and there, but it this is pretty close. And and it shows that interesting variance between the lot sizes are smaller. And the revenue is a bit smaller because there's a a notable number of historic homes that are more like showcases. And not fully lived in with all the revenue that would come. Okay, now we did the same thing with lot valuations. And this was sort of the building block we needed to see what kind of value would come off just the vacant lots. Or the lots, again, because our first mission was smaller lot size. So we put this in place, we looked at some comparables. And and to keep it really simple, we said the average one point oh six acres about a hundred and fifty grand. The average half acre is about a hundred, okay? Then what we did is we compared the nonhistorical versus the historical. And per home, it's about two hundred and forty-five dollars more per year, nonhistorical. And because there's more nonhistorical, the city makes about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand more per year off the nonhistorical. Um, the average per home is just under ten percent. The average for the whole differential is twenty-three percent. I I I skipped ahead to this one. This was the one where we got together and tried to get a pro and a con. Um, I'll show you what that looks like. So. In terms of the the discussion around lot size less than one point oh six acres. We got together, most of us on the committee. And we 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 said that lot size does not affect the historic district. Citizens with half acre or one point oh six acre lots, if something was decided to be done with lot size less than one point oh six acres. They could access their equity. So we nicknamed that citizen equity. Utility revenue increases um because we meter everything. That's an important issue I'll talk about in a minute. Impact fees um can be charged whenever new things are set up, new utilities. Right now, though, we only charge impact fees on two things. We charge it on electrical, we charge it on water. We don't charge sewer and we don't charge roads. But we discovered how to, you know, what would need to be done to do that. I'll talk about that a little bit later. But in terms of cons, again, property rights of owners would be preserved. Over here, property rights of concerned neighbors might not be. So that's the balance. So we wanted to make sure both were recognized. Full property tax is charged here, but other things like some of the affordable housing models, it's not charged at all. Well, it's not quite true, but I'll I'll show you what I mean on that in a minute. Okay, so. This was the pros and cons. Oh, and then the zoning of the county adjacent to city could adopt. So if we decided to go to half acres and it butts right up against the the city boundary. Cody, our our city friend who now works at the county level, I think on prop uh planning and zoning. Let us know that there is a possibility that they could like a domino sort of start grabbing that zoning and rolling it out in the buffer zone. Um, we'll get, we'll keep going here. So, okay, so now the major charter number two, which is affordable housing. Um, there's all kinds of debate and the question what that even means. I understand there's a new phrase called attainable housing. Um, so I'm not gonna go into all that right now, but we do have all that in the, by the way, we have a much more in-depth version of this. It's like double the slides and a lot more of the source documents, but we'd be here most of the night. So remember, the the charter was for development of homes for various, for residences of various income levels. These are different research projects on each of these uh co, you know, chapter slides. You've got all the projects that we did. So this is the visual map of the little two and a half acre lot that. Started a lot of this discussion now about two years ago, I understand. That's where it's located. You can see. Uh, the the trailer court just to the south of it. By the way, this is going north, okay? It will be that way on all of our slides. This is a visual looking down on the trailer court. There are sixteen trailers. Um, there's also a home there and there is a steel building there. So what we what we first did is we did a comparable. And we checked with the owner Brad Sorenson of that trailer court. There's again fifteen mobile homes, a steel building, a home built. There's a debate on whether it was actually built. Sixteen total units. It's two point one acres plus a little sliver at the top, making it two, two point four six. The actual land value out of the property tax records, just under four hundred grand taxable value. By the way, they multiply the actual by point five five to get the the taxable. That's how you know if it's currently a home on the property. So we're making a whopping, South, the Spring City makes a whopping two hundred and twenty-two dollars a year. Off the ground that that's on, because none of the structures qualify for property tax. So there's sixteen, well, the home does. In fact, if you took the home off, that would be cut in half, okay? So over here, we then added in the the revenue items with water, you can see, but this was really interesting. Our single largest client for the for the city for water, who would guess? It's the elementary school by a long shot. But the second largest is actually the trailer court, okay? So um, and they're billed fifty-three dollars a month times sixteen. But we don't meter it out to each of the trailers. In fact, Brad actually came into the last city council to ask if we would, because he has to do the billing by hand every month. Now, we were smart enough to get the full revenue. What a lot of trailer court owners do is they'll take one single line of water. At a much, much lower cost, and they'll meter it out themselves and make all the profit. And so we did not allow that. We have the full eight hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. So whoever was at the helm when that happened was watching out for city interests, electric, wa, sewer and so on. Um, everything together, thirty-five thousand a year off that trailer court. Now, um. One of the things that was brought up as a question. And was, okay, are there significant differences in crime? At um affordable housing, low income housing, moderate income housing. So thanks to James, uh, we went out to a couple of local ci, you know, cities nearby. We looked at our own, thanks to Chief Huff, and validated that, in fact, the data that I think Marty gave us originally. Uh, we went back two and a half years. There's been a total of fourteen trailer court police incidents out of eleven hundred. Which is point four five percent, and they make up two and a half percent of the homes. Does this make any sense? Chester, which I didn't know is not actually a city, it's an unincorporated area. They don't even know the boundary or the population, um, because we've tried, didn't we? We went, we called everybody, we drove them crazy. There was a total of fifty-four police reports. This is county sheriff, fourteen at the trailer court. We actually, which is twenty-six percent. We went over there, there's forty-nine trailers. Did you guys know that in that trailer court? Going straight out from Spring City. Um, don't know how to calculate percentage of homes on that. Ephraim, not quite nine month, just nine and a half months. Um, they have a total of two trailer courts, ten multifamily complexes. And with all of those, there were twenty-seven police incidents, zero in the trailer courts for two percent. And we don't know the, we don't know the total number of homes there. They said they would get it for us, but it will take a while. I can have it by October third. So then Barry gave us some research on. Uh, how we compare with particularly multifamily and lot size and trailer park. Three local cities, we don't have, don't have trailer parks. Two of them do have multifamily, but Fairview does not has, they have an ordinance, but none assigned. And then lot size, ten thousand square feet, which is just under quarter acre. We don't know the an, the answer for Fountain Green. More of this can be gathered, it's just a fairly time intensive. Okay, now, this is looking down on uh the proposed trailer court. And what we did is we ran both models, a trailer court model and a multifamily housing model. This would be looking at, I believe, twenty trailers. And um. The model there is a little bit different than what we saw because we also include the impact fees. Right now, we're twelve hundred dollars one time, nine hundred dollars one time. You can see the actual value. Can you see the property tax, SE taxes, fourth lineup is a hundred bucks? On that property, because none of the trailers are considered. Property, because they're mobile with wheels, right? So if you want a loophole, there's one for you. Okay, so we ran water. Now notice there's two options. And um, this, we had this discussion with Phil. And and said, okay, if the owner decides to meter his own stuff. And as an entrepreneur, he said he would like to, but then he thought long term he might reconsider it, so it's still up in the air. But the water costs are very, very low if he just takes one big pipe of water and meters it out himself. Versus the city doing it all, all the work upfront. You can see all that. So if the owner meters the water and electricity, we make twenty-nine grand. If we do it all, we make forty-six, okay? So that's our second big, uh, that's that's our first big model. Again, pros and cons. Um, the utility revenue increases more if metered by the city. Impact fees, property rights are preserved. Affordable housing options available. No way by the city to regulate the people who live here in the trailers that's done by the property owner. Um, that came up a lot, same with how things look. Um, all kinds of property concerns, those those came up by citizens all the time. And a lot of the feedback was given, well, there are ordinances and things in place to deal with that, but we don't seem to deal with that very often. So that was a pro and a con of, and then the city cannot charge property tax on trailers that are mobile. Potential valuation of property values of neighbors. Um, a major concern was, would this drive property values down for neighbors, okay? Property rights of concerned neighbors are violated versus property rights of owners are preserved. Pro and con, building, uh, zoning of the countyization to the city could adopt the affordable housing city zone. And drive it out to the buffer zone if it's adjacent to the city boundary, which this is, okay? So now, one of the things that we modeled was, because again, planned growth. Means you plan ahead so that you can control runaway growth. One of the models that was put out here was to say, okay, let's have what's called a a controlled growth factor. So we modeled, basically what it is, is you take the total homes and you say the most. So we modeled, basically what it is, is you take the total homes and you say the most that can ever be in place without additional approval from a city council would, would be five percent. So five percent of four hundred fifty-five would be twenty-three units. Ten percent would be forty-six, fifteen percent would be sixty-eight. That would be a model that would show how to control that it's not a runaway train. Um, we did the same thing with multifamily. Now, um, this is our third big chapter and we're making good time, you guys. So we'll provide input regarding, uh, potential revisions to the recently adopted Spring City ordinance, which was done in March. Um, reg- I saw people checking their watches, so if you want to go, you can anytime. Well, we've all put so much time in. Those who want to stay put, please stay put. It gets really exciting. Regarding the creation of a new residential multifamily residential zone. These are the projects that we, that we wo- worked through. I'll walk you through them. Again, same basic map. It's the same basic property juggled between either trailer court or duplexes. So, um, we asked for and received the different architectural renderings. This is what it would look like top down with parking. That was a big concern. This is what it looks like front on and reverse. And we actually drove out there, took a photo of one of the properties. This is a three-bedroom, two-bath with a garage. Okay? This is on Seventh South and about two eighty west, two eighty-five west. In Malplisant. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Thank, keep me on. Okay, so we went and took a photo. Um, this is the actual financial. So eight duplexes, sixteen units. Uh, we were kindly provided very similarble, co- similar comps on this property. So exact same structure, but there's a slight bump in valuation for Spring City. I think it was three hundred and sixty thousand. It's valued here at three eighty-five. That's about what city, Spring City would add to it. It's two point four three acres, but notice a significantly higher property tax. Twenty-nine hundred twenty-eight dollars, because we're making property tax on the property and the structures. We did take into account the size of, of lots as well. And we also have the impact fees. We've got all of the utilities. So, um, notice that with the, the one-time impact fee and the tax plus utilities. So the first year we'd make about seventy-seven grand, seventy-eight, somewhere in there, but ongoing it's forty-four. Again, this is from the city's perspective. So pros and cons again. I won't go over all of them, because we've hit most of them before. We'd have multifamily housing available. The first bullet's important though. Every single, um, unit would have all the full metering, the options are not there like they are with the trailer court to combine and aggregate sort of a wholesale model on, on utilities. Back to cons here, there's no way to regulate the people who rent. That's up to the property owner. And I wanted to really, I, I actually called Brad Sorenson, our comparable and asked him how he does things. I'll go into that a little bit, but he, and, and, um, he currently rents out his trailer court at four hundred dollars per pad. And then they own the, the trailers. Um, I'm told that the rent on, on the duplexes would be fifteen hundred. So there's a bit of a lower income, moderate income model there. But that's completely controlled by the property owner. There's nothing really built into a way to, to control who rents it. There is a potential devaluation of property values, but probably not anywhere near what the trailer court model would be. Property rights again, over here the owner, over here the neighbors. And the zoning of the county could adopt that zone and move it into the buffer zone if this were to happen. Same thing we've done here, we sho- we showed the controlled growth factor. I don't think I need to go over that again. Okay, we'll jump into now city growth, which was our fourth main issue for growth in Spring City. And what we did is we, we did an illustration of this citizen equity model. So, um, if you've owned land, that becomes a bit of your own savings account. This is how you would, uh, tap that. Okay, so, and, and, and that was something that hadn't really been discussed, particularly in city. There's not a lot of big lots. There's, there's one really big one, like eighteen acres. That's a, that's a farm in the green zone, but right now there's lots of just little lots and lots of one acre. And if, and if it was to be to cut in half to, to half acres, it would be mostly citizens who would reap that benefit rather than the big developers. Okay, so that's what that means. So what we did is we jumped in and said, okay, a citizen equity model, what would that look like? We went and grabbed all the potential lots from historic, from nonhistoric, from vacant, from, uh, vacant one acre and what we call the vacant jumbo. There's forty-four of those, but they're, they're big. I mean, they go, they go up to eighteen and a half acres. Okay? So that i- if you were to split the one point oh six acre, again, the smaller lot size, there's potentially five hundred and twenty-five lots if all of that happened. Now that won't happen, but we wanted to illustrate what it looks like. So we illustrated it based on, let's say, two percent of the people who have one of those lots decided to develop it and then sell it. That's what the number would look like. You'd have eleven sold. The two percent was used, because that's the nu- that's the amount of annual growth our city currently has. Then we went to five, ten and twenty. That shows, now this is equity for the citizens. There would be, if they chose to sell it developed, you would have the additional revenue of, of bringing in the utilities and having it ready to be built on. If you sell it undeveloped and we check comps on both, you'd sell it for quite a bit less. But you would just sell it and then the who- person who buys it would be responsible for the utilities. Does that make sense? So, but that would be the revenue sitting in the citizens' piggy bank for citizen equity. Now, change in the exact same numbers to city revenue. We looked at the numbers of the amount of impact fees and remember that building block slide? We bring in about twenty-eight hundred fifty-eight dollars. We didn't add any historical, because we wouldn't be selling any historical homes for fifty years. So it shows the same model in one-time revenue for the city and ongoing revenue annually based on what percentage decided to, um, tap into the smaller lots. Again, this is a lot, but some who've seen this, this is the coolest slide of the bunch, because it has it all mixed together. It shows the laterals by geography. It shows the historic by type and it also shows the size of lot. So this has everything. And we've bolded where you see the sweet spots are. So if you look at the nonhistoric and vacant lots, you see the bold up top. That's where the lots would be that could be sold. Whereas the historic district clusters right here, where all the historic homes are, that's in bold as well. So this one slide has all of it. Okay, now the last piece, the buffer zone growth. This would be planned growth outs- around Spring City. We did several projects there. There's a lot more that could be done. The main rule we wanted to stress, because a lot of people have been worried that there might be a runaway freight train outside the city. And it's very easily checked. In fact, it just was. There is a hundred acre, um, plot of land that developers purchased northeast of the city. They came twice to the city and we just used a two-letter word that starts with N to stop it called no. And that's all that we had to do. So it's that simple, but there's a major issue that we have to consider. Because if I were to boil the whole, the two biggest sort of bombshells of realization we've all had is the historic district and then this one, which is really centered around growth's gonna happen. The question is, do we let the county have all the benefits of it? Or do we let the city? It comes down to that and we really can stop it. We can just say no. But if we do, the county is not saying no. So I'll show you what that means. We, we did some illustrations there. So again, growth is inevitable, inevitable. Planned growth is ideal. That's the thoughts of this, of, of the data. Here's what it would look like. We were, we were modeling a controlled model, a planned model of growth around the city. Right up there is no growth, right here would be, and, and what, what was done was to try and get our arms around. We're, we're only one of two cities in the entire county that has, um, just one acre lots around our buffer zone. All the other cities have half acre zones around it. It's called an RA one. We have an RA two, which the entire buffer zone is only one acres. So in this model right here, we took a single city block and we just drew around it. And then we counted how many blocks fit in that single city block. There's fifty-five of them. Which means if you wanted to sell one acres, you would times that by four. If you wanted to sell half acres, you'd times it by eight, but not quite, because you'd have to figure out roads and things like that. So the one acre perimeter has fifty-five blocks of, of property. The two acre has a hundred and twenty-seven. The three acre or the three block, I said that wrong. That's two block. This is three block, has a hundred and ninety-three. And you can see the pink border is much broader here, narrow here and very narrow here. Does that make sense? So that's really what we did. This is a single slide that shows our modeling. And that's really as far as we got to, because you can run the exact same models there to, to show the revenue. But we got to the point where we can just calculate the blocks and we could very easily show the potential revenue now. The main rule, remember, is that they only would get to do this, they would only get city services if they agreed to annex. So again, the same thing, the utility revenue increases. All would have to be metered unless it is an affordable or a affordable housing model. The ex- all the expansion costs are paid by developers. Now, the city has two initiatives, one that's approved, one that's still being debated and looked at. We've got a couple of slides on those, but there's been a lot of confusion around that. One is, one is approved, one is not. Still wet cement. Okay? Impact fees, now that's really important, because I, we were one, one of the things that we accepted amongst ourselves. Everyone says, charge high impact fees, charge high impact fees. The first couple of weeks, that's what everyone was telling us. That's how you, because what an impact fee does is it helps pay for a project, like for example, the water bond project. If you raised impact fees, it pays down that project faster than if just the city citizens did it over forty years. Okay? So right now, the water project bond, the city citizens are obligated to pay that down over forty years. But every impact fee pays it down faster. If you look at it that way, that's probably the simplest model to understand. That's also why we don't currently have a sewer impact fee. We don't have a road impact fee, because we don't have any projects that were in, in sort of in the past that they're paying off. Does that make sense? Now we found out how to get a road impact fee. We have to get a long-term plan for roads, which is like table stakes and we all agree. You know, there was some strong opinion on the committee about a general plan. Absolutely, absolutely. And we were, uh, but there's been some extremely delic- you know, detailed planning take place. The water plan's been going for five years. The, the plan we were given when we started has been worked on a long time. Does it need more work? Absolutely. We were told when we were handed it that it needed more work. But I was impressed with the amount of work that went into that and went in, you know, Corey talked about the, the, uh, plan that was submitted for the historic district. He didn't tell you, it's three thousand pages. It's three thousand pages. So I'm like, okay, there was some significant work that went into that. I was very impressed. Now notice the third bullet point up. This is of great importance. If we were to annex, let's say, a, uh, a development that's already done into the city, we also get the roads. And those roads qualify, they would up the amount of Class C road fund we get every year. So instead of a hundred and twenty grand a year, we'd get more. So the more roads that we have that we're in charge of, we get more money. And if they're paved, we get a lot more than if they're gravel and a lot more if they're, if they're dirt. And I spoke with the guy who does it and he says, it's possible to get those ratios, but every year the number changes. Does anybody know why? Where does the road fund come from? Comes from the gas tax and they don't know how much gas tax they're gonna collect every year. So one element varies every year, but the others, we can at least know and we can factor it in and build a model. So, but once we have, the downside is whether the buffer zone is growing with or without the city taking advantage of the benefits and the cost for maintaining all of these now falls upon the city. So if we annex in those roads, we now have to maintain them. So, but we get money to do that. So that's how this model works. Um, the, again, the same issue, property rights of owners versus property rights of neighbors nearby. That will always be a balance. And then same thing, while the zoning of the county would adopt the ci- the city zone. Okay, let's jump into some final slides now. We're moving quick. We're almost done. This was really interesting. We decided to say, okay, how do we get property tax? And we went and we found out every single city and the tax rate that they charge their citizens through the property tax through the county and notice where we are. We're right in the middle and actually that's last year. We're less than this. I think we're just under nine point oh nine percent. And look at Maroni, it's pretty similar to us and they're double. Well, we actually called the treasurer of the county and we asked them, how does this work? And they said, well, we calculate and we give you back a number based on what your budget says, but if you push back, we'll change it. That's interesting. So we found that out and some of these cities have pushed back and they have higher and some have pushed back and they have lower. So that is variable. But if, if nothing happens, they calculate it and just give it to you every year. So this is something that we could, um, for either direction, we could change it if we need to. Utilities, notice right up there, there's six hundred and thirty electrical customers, four hundred and seventy-two in the city. Hundred and ten out of the city, seventeen percent. This is our biggest utility that we use outside of the city and some are way outside the city. So these are the projects that we've done. You, we pretty well talked through each one of them. Water, five hundred and eighteen total. Notice there's only forty-eight out of the city. Water is harder to get to people than electrical. We had some serious questions about the water bond project. We didn't know about it. We didn't know about the sewer project. One of the very first things about the third week is we asked the water guy here, would you take an assignment to go to sunrise and ask them some questions? Probably our biggest one, because we were asked to find out how many lots. And one of the biggest things, we, we had a citizen night. Who came to the citizen night? Okay, we, we were upstairs and we talked a long time. We gave everybody three minutes. We, um, we were pretty good keeping that, because we displayed the minutes up on the wall. But we recorded everybody's questions and those questions drove a lot of our research. But this was a huge question and, and, and we asked, if you'd go find out how much expansion would our existing water support? And the answer we got was a hundred and fifty more units and we're about done. But then we heard about this water bond and we researched it and asked, go find out how many more it would support. Nobody had asked that question. And there's been a lot of concern saying that there was this big, huge plan to go make available a thousand hookups. That's actually where the question came from, was our little committee wanting to know, because we were accountable for this. So Randy went and asked them and we asked him, before you go, what's your bet? He said, well, I'll bet we can probably do another hundred and fifty. And he came back and the sunrise said, this would do a thousand, perhaps more. So this came from our little questioning sessions here. It wasn't, it wasn't pre-planned by anybody for that. Now, of course, growth was needed, but the interesting thing was, one of the main things that was, uh, was a catalyst for this years ago, was the fire hydrants. And Rick has been telling us and, and I was gonna use your exact expression, but I'm not going to. But he wanted to know, when are we gonna fix them? So I committed, we'd bring that up. When are we gonna, and, and, and the red ones are those less than code. Now, we double-checked today. Those are researched, those are internal designations. There's not some quality control group, but the fire team went and looked and they tested. The black ones don't work. The or- orange ones seemed to have enough pressure to meet our needs. You can see, remember that, that creek over there? That creek over there? That's where a lot of them congregate and a lot down here. So we have serious problems in certain areas with having water pressure to fight a fire, so a safety issue. This is a summary of the water project. Okay, we tried to gather as much as we could, we wanted it in this documentation. The master plan was issued in June of twenty twenty through Sunrise. The plan was recommend all the elements of the current expansion project. The city has a a an obligation to maintain acceptable levels of service. The other thing I understand is it's gonna bring electronic metering so that we can. Track how much water is being used. When I was going through all of your water bills, I've seen everybody's water bill. One of you had a, an average water bill of like fifty-eight dollars. And then one month, three thousand, six hundred and something dollars. And that was a leak. Now, the city works with us a little bit on a leak. But but we're liable for that. Whoa. So there are some needs where that, if there were metering, we could have found something like that. Real quick. We have to have. Fire flow. The city council approved the water base rate increase of eighteen month, eighteen bucks. A year and a couple months ago. The rate has already improved, I remember, I was asked to do a lot of the analysis on the electrical, not on this, but I saw some of this. And we were told, we hadn't really investigated this in in many years, and the the mayor and the team responsibly, I felt. Because we knew we had to improve some of this stuff. Went back and looked at what would need to be done. And and that initial eighteen dollar raise was done. The city council approved the water parity bond October fifth last year, they approved awarding the project in May. Uh, the base rate went up another five bucks in June, they signed the bond loan for in June twenty eighth for uh, for this year. The construction started already in August, completed by next summer. That's the water bond, it's underway and moving, we didn't know about it. We should have, we didn't. Our committee. It was a surprise to our committee. But we did look, and it's been worked on for five years. And 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 until a lot of the. Emotional discussion of these issues, I didn't come and look. And open the trunk and see what was inside, so. Sewer, there's four hundred and fifty-two. Sewer customers. And only seventeen out of the city, this is really hard. I've done um, two of these little projects. And they have to dig down twelve to fourteen feet. There was a boulder the size of a of a large car. That came out going up forth. Uh, south. This is way more expensive than the water or the electrical is sewer. Again, so this project, the wastewater project, has not been signed, has not been approved. I do wanna go back a little bit, though. There's two big issues. On the water project, one. When this was originally looked at and bid out in twenty twenty, guess how much it was gonna cost? Two million bucks. Just the cost of materials, labor, and everything else bumped it first to seven million. And then about a year ago, we had some with expertise come and look at it. And one of the things they were gonna do was dig another well down in the valley and pump it three miles up. To a new tank. And the question was asked, why would we do that? When we have other water resources that are not being tapped, so that was removed, that lowered it from seven million to five million. But it went from two million to five million in four years. Because of the cost differential. The sewer project. Wastewater. Um, same basic timeframe it was looked at. The city has the obligation to implement wastewater systems to curtail groundwater contamination, this is one of my biggest concerns. I understand, though, there's been research that septic tanks have come a long way in their technology. But I'm pretty concerned with all of these developments around the city. That don't tap into city water or sewer, they bring in wells and they bring in septic tanks. Around our water systems. That would, that that causes me concern, okay, so. It's ninety percent done. In terms of the proposal design. It includes that third lagoon we talked about, the last meeting they had here. That that has to be addressed. The full funding for the project has not yet been secured, the plan is to get a hundred percent of the design and put a project out for bid. Early next year. The public meetings will be held prior to the city council consideration of project funding and final approval. So that's what we were able to find. Roads, this is, we're like the last little bit here. This was interesting, cause we asked some questions there, and then before I go here. Um, I wanna thank Rick again. He um, he brought a perspective that educated us on the committee, and one was. You know, cause we were gonna jump into the sales tax issue, tax issue, and wonder why we're not getting anywhere near the sales tax of Mount Pleasant, for example. So I just ran the numbers with Dave Oxman's help. And remember, we get a hundred thousand a year in property tax. We get two hundred and thirteen thousand in sales tax. Okay, so we get double. From property to sales, Mount Pleasant gets two hundred. Twenty thousand a year in property tax. But they get nine hundred thousand in sales tax. Four and a half times more than we do as a differential. And you have to ask, why did that happen? Now, when I was asked to come in by you mayor and look at the economic development projects. We were batting around all kinds of cool things, we had, we came up with thirty projects, and that's when I opened my big mouth. And got this dang assignment. And it was really interesting because we looked at all kinds of ways we could add more sales tax. But the biggest issue we got happened in nineteen fifty-five. And that's when the state decided to build Interstate eighty-nine. Running down. That valley to the west of us. And bypass us completely. We had like three grocery stores, we had a couple of gas stations, we had a lot more retail. Because we used to be like Mount Pleasant and others where all the traffic went right down mainstream. And we went back thanks to Roger Minor's help and we looked at the minutes, cause there was all kinds of rumors. That this was some conspiracy. That they didn't want people here. And we went back and we looked at the minutes, and our leaders fought it like crazy. They said, how could you do this to us? And so when it was clear that we weren't gonna move the chains on it at all. We negotiated to have Main Street paved. And that's what we got at. So. But because of that. We have two restaurants that can each open two, two meals a day. And that's because they're really good and they can bring in traffic on their own. And that's something we have to understand, our model is very different, now we have beautiful things like the artistic events. And the historic events that bring people here. But we need to find ways to monetize it at them better. Okay, so that's what you see right there, the third bullet point. The rerouting of traffic in nineteen fifty-five, that changed the entire game for us. Okay, now here's the last major slide. It's hard to see, but it will be made available. We went and we mapped out every single road. In the city. The key is up there, the 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 black line is the new road that was just paved, I think it goes up. Second south. Existing are the gray ones. The dotted ones. Those are the ones where you grate your teeth when you drive them. And. And then the dirt roads are the brown ones, okay, the double lines are where new roads could be put in. Now, remember, if we put in new roads, we get more money next year. Does this make sense? From the state, yeah, so they give you an allocation based on how many. Block feet of roads you've got, and whether they're. Brand-new paved. Or. Gravel or dirt. And it's dramatically more for the paved, obviously. So one of the things we might wanna consider, and I know it's been considered in the past. Is strategically, if we were gonna get more money next year, would we pave a road and bring it into service? That wasn't there before, cause now next year's allocation would be higher. That's how it works. Okay? So this map will be available in the slides. So. Again, key principles. Our whole goal. Um, is to preserve, now, we ended up, cause we were asked many, many times. What what could happen if in this battle, battle between historic? And property rights. And all the things, so we decided to go look at that. And this. Was given by Sunrise, our consulting firm. And so we have to take this into account, furthermore, because zoning ordinance is under interrogation of a property owner's common law right. To unrestricted use of his or her property. Provisions therein restricting property uses should be strictly construed, and provisions permitting property uses should be liberally construed. In favor of the property owner. Now, take that for what it's worth, that was the data that we found on this research, okay? That's it. That's it. So I'm told we can. Talk, if you guys have any. Thanks. Comments, questions, or slides or remarks?
A lot of work went into that.
By everybody, yeah.
Information, so appreciate that, yeah, let's see, if there are any members of the. Council that have questions for Ken, or any members of planning zoning that have. Questions, uh, I think he's willing to entertain them and.
There's a lot of information there.
There's a lot, yeah.
That really, that I think planning and zoning is gonna need. To be able to study.
Sure. And these models will be available, you can just move the levers and change the data, and it will actually put out. Different variables than we thought, we just put basic ones.
So are you gonna put it on the city website?
Um, we're working to have this available, I think the normal process is the Zoom audio. With slides, correct, and the, the city Facebook page will have the video version of this. That's as far as I, as I know. Any other questions from the city council?
I, we wanna make it as available as we can, so yeah, we're researching the best ways to do that.
Okay.
I know there was some discussion on the committee about some kind of the minority reports, and did they do it on time, the right way? I think. From my perspective, we wanna make sure everyone has all the information, so we'll probably make all of those. Minority reports available and make sure the council members and planning zoning members can can read them. Cause we don't want.
And by the way, mayor, we, we invited every committee member, we knew we would not come to a consensus by about the third week. And we felt very strong that the primary. Presentation should be factual only. But that everybody had the right to their opinions, and we asked the committee. We said, okay, we can do it individually, everyone can give their own, or we can do a subset group, and they can give their own. And and that was made available, we did have very clear guidelines by which those should be done, they were not met. So that was a great concern for us, we would have hoped they would have done it through the proper channels that we had set up. But I've learned here that everyone's gonna speak their mind no matter what, and this is America, so. I I love that, so, you know, the word's gonna get out. But I do want people to know that we had asked it to be done through proper channels.
I can appreciate that.
Mayor, so, there was one other consensus in the committee. And that's that public opinion matter.
Okay. Great.
Absolutely.
Say, thank you.
I just wanted to, to comment and clarify, you had a slide up there that showed the different times. When different lot sizes were legal.
Yes.
There was one half acre in two thousand and four. What happened then was that the city council. Passed an ordinance allowing a half acre, this was after having run a survey. And a public hearing in which it was overwhelmingly opposed.
Sure. I went. Who was on the city council then?
Most of them are dead.
They're also gone. But uh, I went to the county. And with the help of the county clerk, uh, ran a, a petition campaign. And got a referendum on the ballot. To reverse that ordinance back to a full acre. That's why that half acre, and it came in. And this was the year that George W. Bush won his second term, it was a, a lot of people voted.
Thank you for clarifying.
And seventy, seventy percent of the people who responded in the official ballot. Were against the small acre, and I just, getting back to what Barry was saying. Not only does public opinion matters, in all the training meetings I'm gotten to as a city council member and a planning and zoning commission member. We have been taught. That if you don't make public opinion the backbone of your policy, you're in trouble.
Sure.
So I think that needs to just be remembered if all of this.
Yeah, one of our recommendations um, would be to really thoroughly examine. The methods by which that's done, so I think that would be important. But anything else, mayor?
Uh, Randy has a question. When you was talking about the buffer zone.
Yes.
And Spring City said no twice to the developer, and you you kinda emphasized that the city can say no. So I wanna make it clear, the cities can't say no to the development. The city said no to providing utility service.
Right.
But those, those developments can still go in, the county can still approve them, cause they're in the buffer zone, the county controls the buffer zone. The city just said no to providing utility service.
That's correct, yeah, I understand it's a hundred acres, seventy potential lots. Somewhere between thirty and thirty-five wells and septic tanks. And. The county did not say no, so that's all underway. The city only can decide whether it will benefit and have a say in what's done. Or whether the county will, that's really it, it's, it happened anyway. So. That's one of the things that we noticed are eight primary principles, is the growth's going to happen, the question is whether. We're able to shape it and take the benefits from it. Anything else, mayor?
Thanks, any other questions from council members? I hope it, it'll take us some time to digest this and figure out what, how we can, kind of what action we can take in in response to that. Did, did, did we, did we? Reach any consensus on the specific project that that started this whole thing?
We haven't been very good at that word consensus in almost anything we've done.
So we'll have to kinda start from ground zero and then.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if nothing else from planning and zoning, thanks for your time.
Thanks for your time.
We'll make all this information as available as we can, and make sure all the council and planning zoning members have it. We'll figure out our own, so.